Board meeting for the Colonial School Board of Education's order. I'd like to salute the scene will be led by Board Member, Mr. Robin Cross.
I pledge allegiance to the flag as the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your business to have is any additions and or corrections to the board's agenda. Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Handy, second by Mr. McGee to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Agenda is approved. We've got talents. Meals have been provided by the, at the board meetings by, the we celebration have been very incredible. On behalf of the school board, I'd like to thank the chefs of William Penn on a job well done. Chef Ron LaForno, Chef Michael Diener, Chef Brian Stockham. Here. It was very good, but we appreciate them and thank you very much. Also too, just a quick note is our teacher or Teacher of the Year banquet and their ESPY banquet that we had or function that we had outside. The food and the desserts and whatnot was repaired by the George Reed Middle School Program. So it was very, very nice as well. So thank, please thank them. Pam Ward is culinary teacher over there. So she's not here this evening, so I want you, please make sure we pass along our thanks on that. Okay. Next with order of business decided is who are we? Of two things that we have here. We have the, Colonial School Board is proud to take this opportunity to recognize our 2021 Teachers of the Year and Educational Support Professionals of the Year. This annual awards program is sponsored by the Department of Education and districts around the state. Last month, Colonial had an outdoor drink program while we celebrate. Each nominee and winner receiving the personalized award for their dedication to the students and the district. Robert Poor, a physical education teacher at Southern Elementary School is our District Teacher of the Year. The Educational Support Professional of the Year is Jennifer Dunford, a nutrition services worker at Colwell. On behalf of the school board and as president, we'd like to say congratulations and thank you for representing who we are. You feel you're all winners and presenting you with this proclamation that I'll go through here in just a minute. Alright? Just a quick note. The Teachers of the Year were Terry Downey, Ellen Truckley, Castle Hills, Shelby Richard, Gunny Beffer was Lauren McCool, McCullough Middle, Natalie Ferry, George Reed, Daniel Raymer, William Penn, John Spokenich, Wilbur, David Ostenheimer, Leach, Catherine Residia, Resilio, Golden School, Michaela Boykin, Colonial Early Education Program, Christina Pellegrini, Newcastle, Lana Welsh, Pleasantville Clara Carpenter, Eisenberg Amy Napoleon, and Wilmington Manor Alex Vanover. Backside, well, thanks Jeff. For the Support Professionals of the Year, Kerry Downey, Nathan Walters, Castle Hills, Maria Reese, Eisenberg, Kelly Kershawbaum, George Reed, Chris D'Ambrizio, Gunny Beffer, Carl Bond, Wilbur, Lisa Castle Vera, Leach, Kim Bates, McCullough, Jerika Tippens, Newstap, Newcastle, Katie Carrigan, Pleasantville Donna Robinson, Southern Katrina Heinzman, Wallen Matthew Johnson, William Penn, Vinnie Ranali, and Carla Domigus, Wilmington Manor Naomi Torres, Colonial District Office would be far broke out, Operations Center Grace Collin Reyes, and Colonial Teacher Center Christina McKerschner. And our ESPY winner of the year is Jennifer Dunford. So thank you very much to all and please excuse me for any of the pronunciations on the name. Proclamation. Whereas each October, sorry, proclamation by the Colonial Board of Education, celebrating Colonial Teachers of the Year and Educational Support Professionals of the Year. Whereas each October, the Colonial School District, CSD, recognizes Teacher of the Year and Educational Support Professionals of the Year. And whereas the Colonial School Board of Education states that this annual day of commemoration is designated to recognize, uplift, and honor the roles of the Teachers of the Year and Educational Support Professionals of the Year play in the lives of students. And whereas coworkers, families, and community members nominate Teachers of the Year and Support Professionals of the Year based on their outstanding work ethics, contributions in school divisions and in the community. And whereas a committee of peers and supervisors utilize a selection process to consider and choose the Teachers of the Year and Support Professionals of the Year. And whereas Colonial Nation is forever indebted to the outstanding educational, social, emotional, and physical care each Teacher of the Year and Support Professionals of the Year demonstrates on a daily basis. And whereas Colonial's leadership team takes great pride in those chosen to represent the district, schools, and departments for each Teacher of the Year and Support Professional of the Year. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Joseph P. Law's the third, by the power vested in me as the President of the Colonial School Board of Education in Newcastle, Delaware, do hereby proclaim November ninth as Colonial School District Teacher of the Year and Educational Support Professional of the Year Day. And call upon all of us at the CSD to recognize and honor all Teachers of the Year and Support Professionals of the Year for the contributions they make in the lives of students and staff and Colonial Nation. Witness my hand and seal this ninth day of November in the year 2021.
Yes, and each board member would come up and bring the blue pen in front of them and sign this proclamation on, on your behalf for the Teacher of the Year and Educational Support Professional. One up side of the front center because we know the camera only gets the front center here, so bring it on up. She's on that. Cheyenne, you're on it too.
Where my side is.
Where your name is. Where your name is.
For everyone to see, there's a copy of the proclamation that can be posted.
Copy will be sent to each of the employees. Alright, thank you very much. Mr. Lawrence, for the record, that is one of the, that will be what we hope to be the annual tradition in the Colonial Board meeting, that the school board will recognize those employees. Given, it just allows all the celebrations to go along through the fall and the timing of it. We hope that we can make this a continued, this is the first proclamation, this is the first time a proclamation has ever been issued by the Colonial School Board of Education. I couldn't think of a, a better honor to do that process. So kudos to the board and I think the employees will be much appreciated when they get their copies. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Okay, next order of business we have is the consent agenda. Consent agenda includes board meeting minutes, educational items, personal items, and business items. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is presented?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Your second? They move by Mr. P. Q., second by Mr. McGee. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay. Which is Carrie. Okay, next order of business we have is the updates and action items. Legislature conversation with the boards. I'll turn this over to Dr. Menzer.
Yes, Mr. Lawrence, this also is a first for Colonial Nation. We invited our area legislators to join us this evening for fellowship at dinner and also invite them to join us at the board meeting to have a conversation around public education. We, we are excited today that we have Senator Murray Pinkney, Representative Hemsley, Representative Minor Brown, and Representative Frank Cook joining us this evening. I'm going to ask if you want to, if you could wheel your, your chairs up and join us here on the other side of this, the table. What we can ask is each board member and each legislator kind of share with us what question about public education keeps you up at night? And what we're hoping to do is to share one of the questions, share a few of the questions and then just have a conversation around, around the questions. This is again, something we've never done before and we're hoping that it's something that also becomes a tradition a couple of times a year that we can engage with conversations with our legislators. So I'm going to just pull the, the top one off the deck. I need my glasses for that. So, the question comes from Senator Pinkney. What happens to the students who fall through the cracks? The students who have severe behavioral disturbances, who have attendance issues, who are assigned to alternative schools? What are the long-term lifetime outcome differences for these kids? Senator Pinkney, would you like to share some thoughts around that? And then board members and colleagues can maybe chime in.
Sure, can you hear me okay?
I, we can hear you and I think the mics are working well.
So it's no secret that I, I think social work of my trade, started my career off in adolescent adolescence and stuff. And those kids that would come into my dad were the kids that weren't going to school in our early stages. The kids that were kicked out of school, the kids who were caught smoking at school or had conduct behavioral disorders and those kids were often the ones that would fall through the cracks. They were the ones that people didn't really want to deal with. They were the ones that deserved the class. But we still owe them education and we still owe them opportunities. And because I think sometimes for people it gets so easy to kind of forget about those students and focus on the easier students, my concern is always for those kids that we label them with behavioral disorders or mental disorders or we assign them to alternative schools. And I'm just always curious, you know, if there's plenty of data out there about it, what happens to these kids once they leave our schools? What happens to their employment opportunities? What happens to their chance to graduate in college and remain in college? And how many of those kids end up in what we refer to as a school prison pipeline? So if we're talking about what keeps me up at night, it's those kids and what have they done?
Thank you for sharing.
People respond first.
Well, I can say that.
Coach, I would say we should respond to whatever our current situation is improving today.
Well, or, I mean, do any other board members share those thoughts or have any other thoughts about that? Or, you know, you know, I don't, I feel like a board member has any, any thing to add to Senator Pinkney's question.
Anything else from the board to add to that, concerns?
I, I would say more of Senator Pinkney, kind of a follow-up after the question would be, you played a huge role in HB 100 being passed. Maybe you could highlight, because I, that obviously answers some of your questions, but I'm always assuming in politics, a bill being passed, it's hard to get what you actually fully want to see out of it. So I'm assuming there's so much more that you'd like to see. So are there future goals that you'd like to push in the future to see happen on top of that? And is there ways that we could help in that or things that you are seeing from us or things that you may want to see in the future?
Absolutely. I mean, the work that, that has been done at Colonial around wellness centers, I think it's, it would have, if I think about what this looks like on a, on a massive level, on a perfect level, it looks like wellness centers, a school like the work that's been done here, it looks like appropriate ratios. So when we think about House School 100, like the, the beauty of it is that we're providing these services. We're providing the funding for these services, but we still then talk about workforce development. And she raised it because we have to find a provider to be able to care for these kids. We're also, you know, I think that we need to consider, and I know that this is where I've looked at too, but how do we make sure that families are involved? Like how are we getting familial needs? Because if mom doesn't have transportation to get her to the school or if mom has issues with the lights being on at home or if dad can't find a job, like those issues impact kids too. And so I think when we talk about like, like, as far as state government, so there are more than just HB 100, like either lifetime issues that we'll be working on. That legislatively and, and, you know, that minor Brown, I do a lot of work around protection. So we're regularly looking at what we can do to dismantle this board through that pipeline. So all that stuff, but we're working off of this, you know, we do have some of those coming up that I think would impact that. I guess my curiosity is more on the, on the like local level. Like we think about schools that stay hidden for kids, we think about schools where a kid comes and might get the first mile that they've seen all day or the first meal that they've seen all day. And I just wonder how we protect that for the children and that. I complain because they don't want that bus stop stage. But really they're upset because they just have to walk to school after being yelled at in the morning or they get back to like, get drunk in the dark. And so, you know, these kids that need a little actual love and kindness. And I'm just curious how we protect those students in, in the middle of systems that are already overburdened, already overworked and sometimes resting at the team. And that it's like, it'd be here for us to focus on the, the well behaved students, the students who are on every, every team and every academic faculty. Like those kids get all, get a certain amount of attention, but there's other kids that because they're a little bit more difficult to work with that get forgotten.
Any, any type of like the terms topics that you think that we should be including in curriculums here specifically? Or you don't, you just, you don't know, or no idea?
Curriculum wise, I don't know. That's not as, so my area of expertise. So curriculum wise, I'm not sure, but I mean, we were having a conversation earlier about like regular life skills. So if we're looking at things like, like interview preparation and how to do application and things like that, which I'm sure would be a positive.
Thank you, Senator Pinkney, for sharing your questions and thoughts. Thank you for following up. I do want to ask another, share another question from one of our school board members. You know, I can ask if any of the legislators can feel free to chime in and respond. This is Robin Cross's question. Why are so many students testing below grade level? Yeah, mind you, these are the questions that we've said are questions that keep us up with the name of public education. So I'll ask Mr. Crosson if you want to kind of elaborate a little bit and then we can hear your response from the legislators.
Not just in Illinois, but throughout the state, test scores aren't what they should be. I was a teacher for 40 years and every few years they come up with a whole new curriculum and a whole new testing system and they get through the curriculum and the testing system. It's going to be a great steak and sliced bread. And that's all forgotten. We give us something else and we keep working on it. But there are just too many students that aren't great. I don't have an easy answer and I do think that we said what keeps you up. And I think that's, you know, a major issue for schools is that the testing shows that so many students are low grade.
I've got a question to your question. The students that are performing low on their tests, are they also performing low in other areas? Or is it just during the testing piece?
You mean the grades in the classes? That's kind of a mixed bag depending on what you're looking for. It's just that, that test measures something specific related to math or English, language arts or social studies or science. And therefore, you're not supposed to teach to the test in a certain extent that's, that's done in order to, you know, to get the best scores. Otherwise, you know, you're not really informing them about the information that's going to be tested.
It may even go back to what Senator Pinkney was talking about. I, and I can share a personal story if you don't mind. I, I moved to Delaware in ninth grade and, you know, I, I was a straight A student. I was actually in a program quite academically talented in Pennsylvania. I moved to Delaware, actually starting 10th grade. And this was my first year of high school because in Pennsylvania, we, ninth grade was in middle school. So our high schools were 10th, 11th, and 12th. And I came in as a straight A student. In that first marking period, I actually became a straight A student, the first marking period. And I've been very withdrawn, didn't talk to anyone, kind of stayed in the back of the classroom. Nobody ever really stopped and asked me what was wrong. No one ever stopped and said, hey, are you okay? I just was at risk of failing. But really what was going on was I was having issues at home with a parent. I was having, I was being bullied in school by a group of girls that I didn't know. They were kind of mean. I was a new girl. So for me, it was just not being able to adjust appropriately. And if someone had have just stopped and said, hey, are you okay? What's going on? What's wrong? I probably would have been able to convey what was going on with that person, with me and what was going on in school. Because what it did was, it took me to a point where I was so withdrawn that I didn't care about school anymore. And, and that should have been a red flag, knowing that I came from, I came from being a straight A student to literally straight A's in just a few weeks. So maybe just looking at the holistic piece of it and, and right back to what Senator Pinkney mentioned about, about wellness centers. I think that's important to have the, the mental health aspect in schools. Because a lot of times it's, it's taking a holistic approach to what's going on with that student. It could be the smartest kid in the room, but if you're going home, you're not going to get dinner at night. Or if you have to walk from the bus stop through a drug infested neighborhood to get to your house where your dad might be incarcerated, if mom's working three jobs and you have to take care of your little brother and sister and you can't even do your homework and then get up and get them ready for school. So you're late to school every day. You're not going to be able to focus when you're at school. And a lot of our kids, a lot of our kids are suffering from just that. The holistic piece where I think it's important that we dig a little more into that.
I think too.
I was just going to say also when it comes to testing, I feel like sometimes in the classroom, a lot like, if people don't ask questions, if we don't really understand it, how we should. I feel like we kind of try to memorize things for like the test that like we reflected on our grades, like the, like classroom assessments, not like the standardized testing. So when you do that, like you aren't really retaining it because you aren't really learning. You're just memorizing it and then trying to recite it and then it goes away. So I think that's also a big issue. Like if you're not really grasping the concept, if you're not really absorbing the material and it's just like memorization, then that will reflect on the test because you won't know it because you don't understand it.
I also think too, there, there is a historical aspect of standardized testing that we, so we have like biases in testing and a student's, one, the student's ability to comprehend, grasp, pass testing versus another group of students' ability to be the same. Like that, there's historical precedent that shows that standardized testing is standardized, that's for second group of kids, but other groups of kids have trouble passing those same testing. Especially when we think about the idea that we're not supposed to teach to pass a test. So what, what are these group of kids who are struggling with the, with the testing? What are they missing, be it culturally, be it socioeconomically, that is being picked up on by other groups of kids who are able to pass the testing?
It, it may be, you know, that may be something, when it comes to the standardized test, that is something that really needs to be investigated a little bit more. Because those standardized tests, they really don't determine, you know, how, how, yeah, what level that kid really is on. You know, so that is something that, and I don't know what they're doing in other states or other areas of the, the world, I would say. But it is definitely worth looking into the standardized testing piece. Because what you said, Cheyenne, makes a lot of sense. You know, you, you may be getting straight As, you know, great grades. I'm sure you do. And then you go to take that test and you may not do so well.
So, some students don't test well.
Yeah, exactly. That doesn't determine.
And your, and your question is the same question that's asked every year about the standardized test. Do they really give you the information? What's the right one? What's the wrong? So it's, it's after. Okay, thank you. What else? Did you want to add something, Mr. McGee?
No, I just wanted to say, just listening to the conversation, I used to be an interventionist and that's a program that went away. And I just think that is very important because when I was an interventionist, I was able to notice that kid that wasn't doing well. And I was able to go and figure out what was going on and then put services in place. I wasn't looked at as a social worker or admin. It was somebody that that student could trust. Not only did they see me in school, they see me in their neighborhood. They see me at the store. They see me at sporting events. So they became very close and they were able to open up and talk. I think that program really helps out in all schools because once that went away, it's always either you got to deal with admin or you got to deal with law. There was nothing in between. So you got to have something, somebody can come in and be trusted so these students can open up. And what, and I've been said this many times. Probably what our system is, we know there are seven different running styles, maybe nine, depending on who you talk to. But we only teach one of them. And we leave out the other ones so the kids who aren't disciplined, they get that done.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Ma'am.
Cheyenne.
Yeah, I was just going to say, going off of your point of like, it being like historic and cultural, I feel like also sometimes the way the questions are worded and like the language that is used versus what might be used in the classroom or day-to-day conversations. I think sometimes it's not really, they don't even know the content. It's that you might not understand the question trying to ask.
Thank you very much for your question, Mr. Crosson. Thanks for the discussion. Yes. So I have one more question that I wanted to put out there is from Representative Hemsley. Are we adequately preparing our young people to succeed after high school if they choose not to attend college? And maybe you want to expand a little bit on that in the next.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I think I can answer. So my thought process, and again, I think about this, I worry about this topic a lot is that oftentimes we hear, you're college ready, college ready, college ready, college ready. Yes, there's some conversations around, I guess, what would be deemed career ready. But at the end of the day, I worry that in some cases, we might be focusing a little too much on the whole college pathway. And I'll give you a perfect example locally here at home. I mean, all I hear and my colleagues, I think, would agree with me is that, you know, the trades are desperate for workers. And, and these are not minimum wage jobs. I mean, these are good, solid, high wage earning jobs. And I'm concerned that perhaps we may not be doing all that we could be doing for those students that say, you know what, college is not for me. And trying to connect them in a career path as opposed to just handing them a diploma and saying, that's, that's a walk down the road.
And, and I can respond a little bit of that. As you know, Kevin, I'm in the, in the business where we're always looking for those type of trades. And yes, we have a hard time finding those. But one of the, one of the things that we as a district did seven or eight years ago, I'd say right now, we kind of created the mantra, college and career ready. We've made a pointed effort to commit with the culinary programs. We have the, the allied health type programs we have here now. We have a construction program that started back up that we're starting to get, you know, our feet on the ground. And like, correct me if I'm wrong, but I know that the culinary program representatives are here, is they've actually went out and won some different contests with their pro stars and those type of things. But they've had those and there's other, other organizations that are, that are thinking the same thing, that that is an, an electronic itself. But as we talked about earlier today. But as we talked about earlier today, one of my things that I think that we should be doing better at, okay, is getting our, our students ready for, with the, with the life skills that, that they need. Such things as how do you fill out an application? How do you interview? How do you balance your checkbook? How do you, how do you cook to be able to cook a meal for your brothers and sisters if you need it instead of have to run to the convenience store? Okay, we can do those type of things. There is a type of things I say, Senator, Senator before she left, like, you know, we got rid of the, the home ec type classes. So we needed to think about, we need to bring a mix of those type of classes back in to our curriculum. Kind of get those things back in, which personally I think we do. We gotta have it where our students can do whichever they want to. We recognize that not every student wants to go to college. Someone, someone, some need to get out and get to work to help support themselves or help support their family.
Absolutely.
So we have to get those students ready, whichever path they decide. Yes, ma'am.
Same thing along the same line, but on the flip side of the student, we do one of our colleagues, I think there's a gap in our ability to teach them how to financially achieve that goal. Without going into the student loan, although of a high income. I probably sold about a hundred and ten thousand dollars of student loan debt. And I, I think that we do our students a disservice when we're not making sure what they understand in student loans. Because I know I was a student, I didn't know what I was signing, so maybe I'm mistaken a little bit, but how it got to college and now years later, I'm like, whoa, that may be a little bit crazy for you to be able to do at eighteen. So I think we're, we're, there's a gap in making sure that one, that kids understand like the student loan process. And two, like, understand how to apply for scholarships or other economic activities or other, other economic avenues to be able to pay for college that wouldn't land on a pilot debt until, and they're not even able to understand it until later on that flight. And it's next to me and back to the one they want to get home and cars and their jobs, but they have to start to do that.
Well, another act we have in front of us, scholarships, those type of things. There's multiple scholarships available for students to apply. And as part of our student advisors help do some of this, help do some of this. Another opportunity to be having the wider application. So that we are student athletes. Have to give them, get that facilities they need or need or everybody else to be able to get some of those opportunities. Which, you know, we as a district are starting to look at some of these things, like what can we do better in some of these areas? Yeah, give the students the opportunities to be able to get some of these scholarships. All the ways, academics, athletics, you know, different. We're here performing arts, all those type of things. There, there's, you wouldn't believe the stock chips that are out there. Culinary, all those things. And the apprentice programs, you know, back to trades, you know. There's apprentice programs out there for almost every type of trade. Carpentry, electrical, mechanic, plumbing, you know, they're all out there. And we've started some of those programs in here to give each one of the students a kind of a touchy feely on each one of the different trades. So that's what I'm going to go with.
Good. So, thank you very much for the conversation. We wanted to keep it as just a genuine conversation between the legislators. Where necessarily a chance for us to draw out the laundry that's the thing we think we're doing really well to kind of show off. Or, you know, that not appealing for you to come in and kind of tell us this is what we think we should do. We really just wanted to have a genuine conversation around what really keeps us up at night around education. And, you know, as we continue to have these conversations, it helps inform both sides in terms of the decisions we have to make moving forward for the best interest of the people. So I want to thank you for joining us this evening. Really appreciate it. I know you all are in the lull before the storm and, you know, you guys can, you can get a, get a, get a chance to catch your breath. But, you know, things are going to get, start picking up real soon. So thank you very much for joining us this evening.
My pleasure. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Very important. Thank you. Yeah. Next thing we have is S R three, fun spending plan. Nope, no, I'm sorry. We're back, back to leadership and learning about this. So we're going to need the tech team to bring up the PowerPoint and then make, I believe, Crystal Lane core analyst. Or so she can enjoy the screen. I believe she's the one doing the presentation. Am I wrong about that? Is it not Crystal or is it Sherry Clark? Oh, she has to accept, you need to accept the offer to be, be, be a panelist or so if you're looking on your computer. Oh, Cherry is doing, it's Sherry Clark. I'm sorry. Our director of curriculum instruction. I apologize. All right. We'll get this thing down. Because while we're waiting for her to come into the room, I do want you to note our pending media students in the space. They're practicing and rehearsing to figure out a better technological way for us to do this on the Zoom on, in this current space. Soon enough, they will be the producers of the board, be telling us how to do our job here so that we can better communicate with, with the public. So we're excited to have them here at their, their debut event, clicking away and videoing away for the evening. Welcome to them.
Hello?
Oh, hello, Sherry. All right.
Does everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, President Laws, Vice President Schiller, board members, legislators, and colonial nation. I have a pleasure to talk tonight around leadership and learning and specifically, what does learning look like in math? It's going to be our focus for tonight. Next slide, please. First thing I'd like to do is talk a little bit about data. I know we've talked about that just a few minutes ago. We're going to take a few minutes and talk about where our students are now. And then switch gears and talk about what's happening in classrooms. What are we doing to help support our students? So if we look at this elementary data from the fall, we have a, a Dreambox information, which gave us information around students that are solidly on track, potentially on track, not on track. And then the others were still learning about where they are in the process. And as we look at this, grade two has around thirty-five percent of our students are either on track or potentially on track. And our third grade students have about seventy-one percent in that same realm. Fourth grade, seventy-three percent. And fifth grade, around thirty-nine percent. So looking at just this initial data, we can see that second grade and fifth grade are, are, are real areas of focus right now. As well as making sure all of them are, are catching up. As we dig into the next slide, we can see that even just a month and a half, two months into school, we're already seeing changes. Students are already starting to grow as they become acclimated about being in class, making friends, building relationships with their teachers and their work. And you can see that the green and blues in, in almost every grade level are, are getting bigger in just from September to October. So we're really excited to see that growth and we look to see it continue as we move forward. Next slide. Let's switch and let's talk about middle school. As we look at our middle school students, we see that our sixth graders, when they came in this fall, are currently proficient on average about fifth grade level, six months. Seventh grade, a bit above sixth grade. And our eighth graders are around a, a little bit above seven. What's really key about this data is that if we compare it to two years ago, the year that the pandemic started, our kids in middle school are actually starting above proficiency than they were then. In sixth grade, an entire year stronger than they were then. So I, congratulations, kudos to everyone who's working with those students, teachers, students, and parents. We're definitely doing something, projecting our middle school numbers higher than they were two years ago when they started the year, closing the gap there. Next slide, let's move into the high school. A high school still, still, still seems to be a place where we struggle. Our, we have about ten percent of our students solidly proficient, fifteen percent near the cusp. And then the rest are below and far below. And this is definitely another area that we are looking to improve upon. Next slide. All right, so what are we, oh, go back one, please. All right, so that just kind of summarizes where we know our kids are at this point in time. But now I'd like to talk about what are our students learning and the approaches that we're setting forth to try and accomplish that. We have a three-pronged approach. One being our core classrooms where you typically see the kids with their core teacher. Secondly, we have an area where we have kids attend intervention, which is a targeted skill set around their needs. And thirdly, personalized learning pathways with online programs. And that's the first one I'm going to talk about. Next slide. With our elementary students who were on Dreambox. Now, Dreambox is a program that allows kids, they take a couple, they go through a couple of problems. It determines where they are in their skill set and then it puts them on a personalized pathway to success. As we look here, we see our elementary students, the blue bar being the number of lessons they completed and the orange brown line going across being the lesson goal. Almost every single one of our grade levels have surpassed their lessons for the week. That shows they're taking initiative. They're persevering through everything of adjusting to the school year and getting things up and running and, and taking charge of their own learning. And we're really excited to see that. Next slide. As we dig in even more, we can see the, the number and percent of standards that students have mastered along the way. Again, in their personalized pathway. This is in addition to Core. And so if we look here, there's over a thousand students that have mastered five more standards from the beginning of the year till October, just staying on the course with their online programs. And if we look to the picture to the right, we see that those same students are already twenty-seven percent through that pathway at, at just two months into school. The other students, we're still working through, but they're all progressing. Again, this is all in addition to what they're learning in Core. Again, really exciting to see. Next slide. Now, another program that we expanded this year, we just had this a little bit in just a small group of students, is S T Math. Now, this program is online as well, personalized, but it uses zero words. So everyone has access to this program. It's puzzle-based. It's a little bit more game-based. We're looking for something else to increase engagement with our middle school students and our K one students that don't have as much language skills yet. And so if we look at the average puzzles per week, we're averaging up between thirty and thirty-five. And S T Math has this projected around forty. So we're very close to that. Same thing with our minutes. Students are averaging between forty and fifty-five minutes. And S T Math's recommendation is sixty. So students are really going along. You can see this student over here, she's got her, her golden Gigi for the week and she's super excited about that. Next slide. Now, our high school, which we know that we have areas of, of need there, they're using Imagine Learning. And the program recommends sixty percent of our students passing their on-grade levels at this point in the year. And we're actually showing seventy-three percent. And so what this program is allowing kids to do is catch up on some of those skills that maybe were unfinished while they were virtual. And it's allowing them to tackle the on-grade level content. So we're really excited by this as well. Next slide. In addition to those online programs I just talked about, we also spent a lot of time looking at interventions. And so this is a new intervention kit here on the left that we have just purchased this summer with Easter funds around building fact fluency. And what we noticed is that our younger students were still struggling with this in our spring data. And so we purchased this evidence-based tool and we have many of the schools who are actually using it as part of their school's success plan over the next quarter focus. It's going to be a really strong area that they pay attention to and monitor. So we'll be excited to see what happens with that. In addition, we're focusing on adding additional math routines and acceleration strategies, which allow all kids to have access to the core curriculum. Next slide. One of the things that guides all of the work that we do in math is our rights as learners. And this really speaks to something that was mentioned earlier tonight around that community, around kids feeling good about where they are and the community and the, the other kids in the class. And so feeling that you have a right to say what makes sense to you when you're thinking about math and to share unfinished thinking and not be judged. All of those things tie into the whole child and feeling more confident about the space you're in as you're taking risks with the things that, with new learning. Next slide. Now let's peek in some classrooms. And we talked about some life skills here. All the next things that you're going to hear about are all things that translate across content areas and life. Problem solving is a big piece of that. And as we look, this particular student is using cubes to work through a math story problem. Next slide. Here we've got kids reasoning, seventh grade middle school students that gunning Bedford are having fun with S T mysteries as they try to reason through math problems. Next one. Creating. Here we have two examples of students creating models and representations, again, skills that cross multiple areas. Next slide. And calculate. This is one we're all really familiar with, how we use numbers to make sense of them and calculate answers. Next one. And justify. So crucial as we go through, in here, we see students justifying their thinking with words, models, tools, and representations. And last but not least, connecting. It's so important for students to see connections between different concepts. And here we have our virtual kids and our in-person kids making connections between math concepts. Next slide. All right, and so that about sums up many of the strategies that you would see happening in math classrooms now. If you did a walkthrough anywhere, you would see kids in action doing any of those things and really looking to see month by month how we can support our kids, both through all the, all three strategies, both in Core, I should say, in Core, in intervention, as well as through the online personalized pathways. Any questions?
Any questions from members of the board?
I was wondering, why, why do they feel that there's such a drastic drop at fifth grade?
Did you hear that, Sherry? Kennedy asked, what, what was the thinking around the drastic drop in fifth grade?
You know, we're still collecting data on that. On that other chart, there's a lot of kids that are still in gray. We're still trying to determine what it is specifically around that. I can, I can get back to you again another month on that, but we're still trying to figure that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Took my question, but do you think part of that is, is a concept change? Where they got comfortable and then fifth grade is a concept change and they having problems with it?
So if you're speaking specifically about fifth grade, like I said, I'm not specifically sure. I do know that fifth graders, many of them were not necessarily in school for the last year and a half. I don't know if there is specifically within, you know, being virtual versus being in person. I know there's a heavy emphasis on fractions, which could contribute to that. But I, I, again, I, I feel like we still need to get a little bit more into the school year to see where the kids are that seem to. But I, I, again, I, I feel like we still need to get a little bit more into the school year to see where the kids are that seem to. Wha- what area is it fractions, is it something else? Um, and what is the foundational areas that seem to have some misconceptions?
Hey, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next order of business we have is the S R three fund spending plan.
Uh, good evening Colonial Board members, President Lawes, Vice President Schiller, and Colonial Nation. Um, this evening, I'm going to go over with you the spending plan for the S R three grant. Uh, that we received several months ago, if you're in the next slide please. So just some background on this legislation, uh, this was signed back in March. As part of the American Rescue Plan signed by President Biden. It did appropriate another one hundred and twenty-two billion dollars to the elementary and secondary school. Emergency relief relief fund, um, affectionately known as S R. So we've got S R two grants, uh, this is now S R three. Um, so, the allocation of this funding for this round to Delaware was four hundred and ten million. Colonial received uh thirty, thirty million, six hundred seventy-one thousand. To spend over the next three years. So the application process, we were given our allocations at the end of March. Um, we did have to put in some information around our reopening plans, which a lot of that included safety protocols. And uh, how we were going to keep the community informed and and keep the community safe. Um, that was due in mid-June. Um, we have gathered input from public partners and um our Citizen Financial Oversight Committee on. On their ideas around how to get this money um spent and out the door. Um, we submitted this plan by to D O E at the end of August. And as I mentioned earlier, the funds must be obligated by uh September of twenty twenty-four. Um, if we can actually skip to the targeted approach slide please. Next slide, there you go. So we did try to take a little bit more of a targeted approach, the S R three. Buckets or focus areas had fourteen different areas where we could put money to be spent. Um, this was anything from enhancing our facilities for air quality purposes. Um, down to mental health supports for students, um, and everything in between. We did try to create a sustainable plan to really leverage as much of this funding for the maximum benefit of our students and staff. While again minimizing the impact of the funding cliff, uh, because you know, as we know, when twenty twenty-four comes and goes. And this funding is no longer available, we wanted to make sure that we weren't left with a lot of costs that were ongoing, uh, that we were going to have to sustain or. Program, you know, we'd have to put um cuts into place. So we focused in on a smaller number of priorities that we could really implement. With, you know, quality, with fidelity, and make sure that we were really adding value for our, our students and our staff and community. Uh, we could go to the next slide. So there is going to be definitely a broad impact from the S R three grant, uh, and the, and the spending as a result of it. Um, they are, the, the funds are sorely needed, but again, managing this much additional influx of cash does. Cre- creates its own set of challenges, um, it is, you know, creating capacity concerns in some areas. Um, and despite the way that we've tried to target this funding, it really is going to impact everything that we do. And every department over the next three years. Um, so because of that, rather than go dollar by dollar, because if, if I went dollar by dollar with thirty million dollars. We'd be here until tomorrow morning. Um, you know, I wanted to highlight how the departments um are going to be impacted, what initiatives. We're going to be focused on and how it's going to change the work that we're doing over the next couple of years. Um, I do want to point out that my presentation is focused on the department level. But all of the work that I'm going to highlight is ultimately aimed at our classrooms. Our, our principals and our teachers are doing the critical work every day in our classrooms. Um, but because of how this is budgeted, it's, it's really focused more at the department level. So I didn't want that to go, um, to go unstated. So if we could go to the next slide. So some of the key investments that we have coming out of the, the S R three grant. Um, it does require that we spend twenty percent of the funding on addressing learning loss. We actually put almost twenty-three percent of our allocation, six point nine nine million dollars into this focus area. Um, in addition to that, almost seven million dollars, we've got another three and a half million set aside. For after-school and learning, uh, summer learning programs. Um, that was another one of those focus areas, I think they're very much joined together, the learning loss. Is obviously going to be addressed in after-school programs and summer learning, but because it was a separate focus area, it's listed separately. Um, in order to make sure that we are maximizing that investment, we created a supervisor of extended learning position. Um, this position is going to be key in making sure that those dollars are going out the door. Um, for quality programs, that they are coordinated, they're not redundant, um, and that we're not. Putting programs in place that are not actually effective in moving the needle for our kids. Uh, additionally, we created a grant specialist and an additional leave specialist for our um H R department. Really to make sure that we can responsibly manage all of these funds. And, you know, some of the personnel impacts that we felt because of the pandemic. Um, and the complexity of leave, we've had new federal leave programs started. You know, we needed some additional support in that area, so we hired an additional leave specialist to assist with that. Uh, next slide. Uh, if we move into our health and wellness department, um, this is uh managed by Dr. John Cooper. Um, he is, he, he and his team are focused on all aspects of the day-to-day management of the pandemic. And the, the protocols and the public health coordination. Uh, but the major things that he's going to be, he and his team are going to be focused on in the next couple of years. Is really going to be managing some of the additional supports that we want to put in place for our students. Um, we're, we're doing this via contractual resources, one, because we're worried about that sustainability component. And making sure that we can effectively utilize these resources without having staff cuts to worry about, you know, you know, when the grant expires. Uh, but we are looking at substance abuse counselors, um, having a contract to bring those, uh, some of those folks on board. Um, nursing support has been a critical area where we really needed to bolster our, our uh supports. This includes not only actual nursing uh supports, but also some um certified nursing assistants who assist with. Making sure that kids have, who have to be in isolation rooms, um, if they are presumed positive or have symptoms, can be supervised. Um, and that that supervision is not taking away from, from our staff and our nurses' ability to, to do uh tend to other things. Um, and then we're also bringing in social workers to really address attendance concerns and make sure that. You know, any of the kids who may have become disconnected from the system over the pandemic are brought back in and can really be aggressively. Um, supported in making sure that they, that they uh finish their educational experience. Um, we're also continuing to support a lead nurse physician. Um, this is actually a position that has been moved from um the existing complimentary positions onto this brand. Uh, because she's been basically relieved of her day-to-day building duties. To focus full-time on helping to manage this response from the health and medical side and we is with B P H. And make sure that our, our coordination is as seamless as possible. We move into uh the next slide and look at our H R and talent development offices. Um, again, the H R office continues to manage all of the personnel needs, you know, the, the number of folks that we have on staff is growing. Um, but in addition to those position growth, we have more turnover because of some of the churn that we're seeing. The labor force issues that, you know, everyone is managing nationally right now. So that does add to the workload that folks are having to manage as um, as that churn happens. Um, and again, lead, the lead coordinator or the lead specialist position that I mentioned earlier. Again, it was just to make sure that we were handling the workload for our employees, um, in a timely manner. And then talent development, um, is really providing support to make sure that, you know, we are going out and marketing Colonial. Effectively and aggressively to the scarce labor force that is out there. Um, you know, teachers have uh broad discretion in where they choose to, to land these days. And we want to make sure that they know what they're getting with Colonial and, and um that we can dedicate resources to making sure that we get the best. Staff to put in front of our students. So if we move on to transportation and nutrition on our next slide. Again, they have been working tirelessly and seamlessly since the beginning of the pandemic to make sure that we keep our kids fed. Um, you know, obviously while we were virtual, our transportation department was critical in actually delivering food out to our community and to our students. Um, they are now back to the critical work of getting kids into our buildings. Um, and, you know, our nutrition department has a mist to be in pivoting back to um in-building meal, meal service. Most of the funding that they are getting, um, was actually supported through the S R two funding. But again, they are a critical part of um our recovery as we come out of the pandemic. Um, if we move to curriculum and instruction, as uh, as our director, Sherry Clark, uh, just mentioned, you know, we have made some. Some investments in some new curriculum resources, she mentioned S T math and Dreambox. Uh, those are being supported with S R funds to really enhance the, the resources that are out there and keep kids engaged. Uh, but we're also going to be investing in a new K five E L A curriculum. Um, that is really going to be a, a big lift for her department and will involve a lot of coordination with. Not only her team, but the school divisions and the school principals themselves, teachers, et cetera, as that gets rolled out over the next few years. Um, and then of course, their, uh, the C and I team will also be coordinating extensively with our extended learning supervisor. To make sure that all of the resources we're putting in place after school and over the summer are aligned and consistent with our curriculum. Um, if we move into the next slide on our school division. So, um, this division basically supervises our principals and ensures that our schools. Are run on a day-to-day basis, um, as seamlessly as, as possible. Uh, they are going to be recommending placement of the additional teaching resources or teaching. Units that uh we've got budgeted in the S R grant to assist with not only the learning loss. But ensuring that we can enhance, um, you know, and keep, keep ratios low, keep class sizes. Um, manageable so that, you know, we can really focus on um effective learning. Uh, they're also going to be key in coordinating with our principals and extended learning supervisor on making sure that. We really are, you know, that all the programming is aligned. Um, they are also going to be working with their principals, we do have money set aside. To basically address needs that may emerge this coming school year that we haven't necessarily seen the need for yet. So that we have some resources um available to dedicate to those type of, of issues as they come up and. Uh, they'll be critical in identifying those. And then there's also contracts with some community organizations. To basically provide, again, more support for students and making sure that they can successfully uh keep going on their educational path. Um, just a few more to go, just gives you an idea of how expensive thirty million dollars is. Um, so next is our student services division. Um, so in addition to the, the S R three fund, Colonial is also receiving an enhanced allocation of I D E A funds. What I'm going to go over, it also includes activities there. Um, they are also, our student services division will be working with our C and I team to align the curriculum. Um, to make sure that our specialized students can access that and have proper resources there. And then we're also bringing on additional contractual staff for some of our therapies-related services, et cetera. To make sure that we are addressing the individualized needs of students with disabilities. And then of course collaborating with our school division on ensuring that, you know, we have staffing recommended in the proper areas to be. Supporting all of our needs. Um, our technology team on our next slide. They are going to continue basically managing the replacement, um, of all of the smart boards in the district. That's, we started with the elementary classrooms. Um, the secondary classrooms are going to be rolled out at some point this, this coming school year. Uh, so they are going to be overseeing that implementation. Uh, they're also maintaining the support of a one-to-one initiative for, you know, every single student has a Chromebook. Um, in almost all grade levels, uh, and they have been managing and supporting those. Enhanced needs since the pandemic began. Um, they're also managing and supporting all of the new software and all of the new uh resources that. Have been put in place to assist with the curricular demands, um, that our C and I team has uh chosen to invest in. Um, again, our reliance on technology has drastically increased since the pandemic began. Um, so the critical work of our tech team is, um, you know, can't be understated at this point. And they continue to manage an increasing workload, um, they provide critical day-to-day support to our staff and students. Um, and, you know, man, making sure that, you know, we can get everything done. Because as everybody knows, if your device isn't working, your internet isn't working, uh, you're, you're not doing much these days. So, you know, their, their support continues to be, to be critical and appreciated. Uh, we move on to our facilities department. This is where we have almost half of our extra funds are actually earmarked to address some critical projects that are going to. Upgrade the facilities of our buildings, uh, or the condition, I should say, of our buildings. Um, we've got air quality projects with H V A C renovation, um, as well as roof replacements. Which will also enhance the air quality, because as we know, you know, roof leaks and other issues can lead to moisture. That can lead to, you know, air quality issues, et cetera, so we will be using a portion of our extra funds to make sure that our roofs are in. Are in good shape. Um, and I think it is worth pointing out that by using our extra dollars to invest in our facilities in this way. We are able to, to really make a lot of headway in the deferred maintenance. Um, that we have around the district without asking our taxpayers for additional dollars through a major cap referendum. So that was a, a critical um decision to, to really focus on that area and make some headway. Uh, next slide, we have uh the business and finance division. Um, in addition to the three rounds of S R funding that we are, uh, that we're managing. You know, more state grants are coming through and more federal grants are coming through, partially because of all the other extra money that's out there in. In the state and other agencies, um, but also, you know, increased investments with the opportunity funding and so forth. So in addition to more transactions going out the door, um, which we review all of those. Um, you know, we've got new grant compliance to worry about, additional contract management, et cetera, so. Um, the grant specialist position that we added in will definitely help making sure that all of the resources and all of the funds that are being spent. Um, are being managed appropriately and, uh, really, you know. Getting the best bang for our buck for our, our students, staff and community. So, in summary, on our last slide here. The S R three funds really are going to impact every single building, every single employee group, every department. Um, and really everyday functioning for the district over the next couple of years. Um, and we're focused on, you know, all of the mores, um, we do want more instructional time. Uh, we want more curricular resources, you know, we want, but we also need more administrative and financial support to make sure that all of that is happening. Um, you know, appropriately with fidelity, you know, in compliance with what the requirements are, et cetera. Uh, so that is, uh, believe it or not, a quick overview of our S R three grant. Uh, and I would welcome any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from members of the board?
Yes, Emily first. One, that was something that was thrown on me this past year, obviously, without having the addition of extra staff, I'm assuming at the time, so. Kudos to you, I'm sure it was a great task to deal with trying to implement this, and I know you're trying to add staff in there. Uh, so that's great.
Thank you.
So definitely great job, thank you for, you know, getting the funds towards allocating it as well, but, um. What is being done to show transparency of the spending either on state level, district level, federally, is there anything that they're doing? Such as what they did, uh, you know, back in oh eight or oh nine, uh, with those ones that were given.
Um, great question, so we do have, right now, the S R three plan, the actual budget details, which is a forty-some page document. Is sitting on our website, um, I think we probably want to do a little bit more to make it a, a little bit more, um. Accessible or, you know, advertise that it's there a little bit more. accessible or, you know, advertise that it's there a little bit more. But those details have been put out there publicly. I do know that DOE is, they are checking to make sure that we've got those that information out there on the website for folks to access. You know, I I haven't heard of any other initiatives that the state's putting forward to enhance any of the and any of the visibility. But, you know, we're also going to put this presentation out on the website as well to make sure that folks have, you know, this information is a little bit more, I think, accessible than the forty-three page budget document. So that'll be on the website as well.
And how much flexibility do you have with the spending after that plan was submitted, as far as if things change over the next, you know, three-year timeline?
As with any grant, there is an amendment process. So, you know, and there are some of the areas where we basically just said, this is how much roughly we're going to allocate to this area. And the specifics are going to be defined at a point, you know, at a later point. So our summer learning and after-school budgets were essentially placeholder amounts that we put forward just saying, we know we want to invest in this area and we know we think this sounds roughly appropriate. And we're going to go from there. Same thing with some of the the facility projects that, you know, it was, once we had a lot of the educational programming that we wanted to make sure we we were able to invest in, that kind of said, how much do we have left over for some of these projects? And there's going to be a prioritization process that is ongoing and we will amend as we need to.
So with this, I know these funds are going to create new positions within the district. What's the plan for them after 2024? And are some of those, are they only pandemic-related as far as it's the strength in a certain situation, so we have to create jobs such as the CMAs, stuff like that? Is there a future plan? Because obviously that would be additional money that's going to come from local, you know, for after 2024 and stuff like that.
Yeah. So part of the reason why a lot of what was mentioned was contract management, you know, we're we're having a contract for social workers, a contract for the CNA. Because if, you know, once the contract is no longer needed, if CNA's are no longer needed for our buildings, you know, the contract gets gets terminated and, you know, while it's, while it's, those dollars aren't going out the door anymore, it's not cuts to our employees that we have to put in place. In terms of the positions that will actually be funded on the grant, I think we've we've definitely had a lot of conversations about making sure that they are sustainable. We're already looking to twenty-four and making sure that, you know, is this something that we think we're going to continue to need? After we get to that point, if it is, we really do look, you know, to see, is there a way that we're going to be able to fund it at that point? I can say that the opportunity grant funding or opportunity funding, I should say, is has been codified and that the investment in those funds is going to increase over the next couple of years. So the hope is that that funding being added on a sustainable basis will help to offset some of the the cliff that is coming when this fund, when these funds expire. So it will certainly not a wash, but it'll balance out a little bit more than if that was not going on.
Thank you very much. After 2024, will the position for lead nurse continue?
I think I think that would be a discussion that we would have to have internally, but, you know, if the need still existed, it would certainly be something.
It's not strictly
It's that, right. It doesn't have to be, I think, I think, you know, if it evolved into the need for a nurse that kind of did not have a building assignment to keep that department, you know, running efficiently, I I I think we could discuss that. But that would be something that I think we'd have to see the landscape that we were looking at in twenty-four.
See what the needs are definitely.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next order of business we have is student school board representative report. China.
Hi, everybody. Okay, so updates with the senior class. So as president of the committee, we've been just brainstorming ideas, trying to figure out some fun activities we might be able to do. We're definitely waiting to get some approvals and like reviewed by admin. We're also trying to like recruit some more people to help like organize and help out when we do start having events or activities. Right now, we're currently holding elections for our vice president position. Our candidate for our Rashawn Dafayoko and Lucy Apprendt is voting ends this week, actually. And then we're going to have that all tied up. All the other offices have been filled and mainly it. Oh, also, we're thinking of ideas of things we could do to put in the the case that's in the lobby downstairs. So, yeah, we're going to see how all the things go and it's also just approvals and stuff like that.
Did you want to borrow Mr. Wallace's gavel for any of your meetings right now?
That would be great, actually.
At at work, I have one that's about that long.
Yeah, I like that one.
Sounds like she's doing a little bit of lobbying to me. Mention that more than once.
Waiting to see what she says. All right, the next order of business we have for action is the waivers of provision fourteen dollar administrative code seventeen oh four, seventeen oh five A, class size waivers. We all know that's been posted for one month. And we could take action upon it at this time. I hear a motion to waive the provisions of Title XIV.
So move.
Wait a second.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Cross and seconded by Ms. Kennedy to waive the provisions of Title XIV, the dollar code SS one seven oh four and one seven oh five A for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? Next order of business we have is discussion around proposed regulation eight fifteen, section six point zero, COVID nineteen mitigation and prevention. Dr. Menzel, if you would, could you please bring everyone up to speed on what the proposed regulation eight fifteen entails?
Regulation eight fifteen is a longstanding regulation for the Department of Education around health screening and immunizations. Recently, the Department of Ed posted for public review of revised eight fifteen that included section six point oh, which essentially required mandated masks in schools for a COVID mitigation strategy, basically taking the current regulation, the way it is out there, I'm sorry, emergency order as it is out there, and making it part of permanent regulation. That was open for public comment through November first. And presently, DOE is reviewing the public comments that they receive before they, as they move forward with the next round, which is basically announcing what the regulation will be.
Okay, I know that we've had some discussion on this side of, at some of the DSBA committee meetings. Just begin, you have anything to add?
Yes, the SBAs come out against this particular regulation because there is no mandate involved. That's giving them a mic check whenever they want to create an emergency. Next thing, we're in the masks. So right now, they're opposed to it, but public comment period has passed. We will probably have to make the political moves once this becomes regulation, if they don't adjust it.
Mr. Piquet, I know that you were a part of a meeting with someone, somebody on it as well. Comments?
Now, just to clarify, it was specific wording and DS, John Marinucci did clarify that many times in his discussions with the governor's office, state officials, that it's not the full regulation that they are against. It is the wording of that mandate with no time ending. So just wanted to clarify that. And at this point, it is not, we're not seeing exactly where it's going to go. So I agree with Leo that statements will have to be made if they make certain decisions to approve it as they propose the work.
But DSBA has gone on record and in the public comment of being against it?
Yes, sir.
And also it's taken away local control without an emergency action.
Other comments or questions from members of the board?
I just wanted to state that even though we don't know the final proposal, what we're saying is pretty clear that we think section six should be removed and failing that should qualify the language. And like Leo said, maintain local control. That's that's what it's about. If we don't say something, then people assume we agree.
Pleasure to the board. Take any action on it? Just want us to to deliver the message through DSBA, which I think some officers already pretty much gave our personal opinion on that. But as a whole, we just want to deliver that message and then react to the regulation when they come out with their proposed final language.
I'd like to make a note. Like to make a motion to approve the Colonial School Board statement regarding proposed regulation eight one five, section six point oh, COVID nineteen mitigation and prevention.
To remove it? Are you, I just want to make for clarification, Cross, are you, basically, you're making a motion to that the statement that's written in the board agenda, that's the statement? You're affirming that statement? That's the, that's, that's the statement. Okay.
All right, go ahead. A second. The move by Mr. Cross is seconded by Mr. McGee to approve the statement as as per our school board statement as in our meeting, our meeting agenda. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose nay? Next order of business we have is the Delaware School Board Association's updates. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Can you give an update on your last meeting?
We covered mostly everything at the last meeting. We had the Wilmington education cooperative, which Colonial was not involved in discussion because we weren't at the building. We had a blast on cybersecurity through the O A. I do believe documents will be involved with crowd strike. Yeah, it's a security program offered by the O A.
Not something I'm totally familiar with. We would have to ask our supervisor technology. It'd be an IT department question.
Yeah, IT, yeah.
Okay, well, the main part of meeting was going to form NSBA vote that had gone out. Governor is a member of the NFBA. There was no vote taken. Word directors stated they were not familiar with the letter when it went out. Person that made the letter is gone. And pretty much wasn't going to be enough, even though we might have needed that kind of protection last month. So NSBI probably take a vote January for next meeting, whether to stay or leave. I'd like to put on the agenda for next month that board vote on staying or leaving NSBI or vote to DSBA.
Sorry, did you mean that DSBA will probably have a meeting next month to vote for NSBA?
No.
Right.
So.
He said NSBA will have a meeting.
We need to be, one meeting next month, we have to vote.
Right, should I be on the agenda for next?
I will vote, I will vote. Or have a DSBA.
So to be clear, you would like to make sure that there's a, there's a, there's an agenda item related to Colonial School District remaining a part of NSBI. Got it.
Anything else, Mr. McGee?
That was quite enough, thank you.
Piquet, anything?
There was no meeting since our last school board meeting and we discussed anything of importance just a minute ago about regulations fifteen. And there won't be another meeting until February.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right, next thing we have is items removed from the consent agenda. We had none. Items added to the agenda, we had none. And the next thing we have will be public comment. We're going to get into that in just a minute. Okay? Just go through the statement that we have here. This session allows community members to discuss their views on issues and allows, but does not obligate board members to respond within the three-minute time slot allotted to the individual public comment. Administrative staff may be identified and asked to provide follow-up specific, follow-up on specific questions after the meeting. The responses from the individual board members not necessarily reflect reflect Colonial School Board of Education's official position. The opinions and views shared tonight are those of each individual member. If a member of the public has documents to share with the board, they should indicate as such, and a member of the executive leadership team will collect the documents and disseminate them to the board. Laws providing the privacy rights of the employees and students prohibit board members from engaging in a discussion of any employee's performance or qualifications or confidential matter relating to a student. If a board member violates such statutory rights to privacy, such board member may be exposed to individual liability. Concerns regarding individuals will not be discussed in the open forum. If you have a personal issue regarding your child or children, we will help you set up an appointment with the appropriate person to address your needs. It goes into whoever wants to speak to the numbers we can call. Again, I would remind everyone, you have a three-minute time limit. Okay, we will ask too that if you are present here tonight, please come to the table and sit in the chair with the microphone there and be at that table during your question and or statement of the presentation. Okay? Okay, first individual I have is Jackie Price. Please go for it. Thank you very much.
And thank you. For clarification, well, my, my, my question is regarding the first two questions that the representative brought up is mental wellness. So my question is for clarification on therapeutic persons in in the school for to help my child or children, what what is basically the protocol for that? And I came and my, and my child came excited for middle school because we, after a very long struggle, we had state contracted persons for my child to be able to successfully get through the school day. And they are contracted to be with my child and to eventually help actually his children get through and go into mainstream. And I feel that with just the, my experience with the Colonial School District and my children is a little backwards. It's, we need to see the problem, see how big the problem gets. And by the time there is a problem, there is, it's very, it's very hard to bring it back. I came with solutions. The state doesn't easily, you know, bring, bring on, you know, pay for people to be with somebody that has been that has needs mental health problems. So we've gone through years of that. At this point, I feel that there's, it's been identified. At this point, I feel that there's, it's been identified in the school and it's very easy to get the information, there's mental health disability. And right now, that is being, he's being denied his right. I get calls, so basically I feel overwhelmed. And the teachers, I feel like bad for them because instead of my child being in the classroom and being educated, they're trying to convince them to be in class, trying to convince them to stay in class. He can't, they can't blame by itself, so that's taking away from the classroom.
What we'll do is that, so, talk to me, I have a conversation, we're going to have this Holly Sage reach out to you. Okay? And gather all your concerns and then see.
And what would be a timeframe for that? Because I, I feel this is urgent.
Okay, well, she's going to say something to her tomorrow, so. Just make sure that, that you get phone numbers and whatnot, whatever you have.
I have, I have the email address you wrote on the slip. Is that the best way to reach you tomorrow to set up a time for our conversation?
Yes.
Okay, you just Holly Sage, the director of special, of student services. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next one we have is Ms. Tamika Hill. Yes, she'll be virtual.
Hill, if you can hear us, you're going to receive an invite to be a panelist from the technology department. So you have to accept that invite to be able to speak to the board.
Hello. Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Great, and, and your time is starting now.
Okay, great. So let me start with my question. My name is Tamika Hill, also known as Tamika Michelle. My question on this evening is, when do we start supporting and restructuring the way we educate, assist and manage our children who have IEPs versus provide disability harassment? I am a former counselor therapist in the schools for over seventeen years and I have come to witness and observe how our African American students who have IEPs, five oh fours and VIPs, behavior intervention plans, get caught in the prison to pipeline system by not having the proper interventions and resources and/or the schools not taking the time to do proper research based on this disability. This year, as a parent, I have witnessed at Gun and Befford where my child not only has an IEP but has been harassed and triggered by the school resource officer by cursing her out, bumping up behind her, and now constantly harassing her by making fun of her along the side of other administrators. Staff no, where there's no consequences given. In addition to my daughter, I have connected with several other parents who, students has IEPs at Gun and Befford and their child has been harassed verbally and physically abused from the staff at the school. It's at the point where all of us have been offered either alternative schools or to be able to assist and or transition our kids to George Reed due to them not wanting to assist our children. So again, my question is, when do we start supporting and restructuring the way we educate, assist and manage our children who have IEPs versus disability, versus provide disability harassment? I have already talked to Ms. Sage, so I'm hoping that you do not redirect me to her. I have attended IEP meetings where she has put me on mute. I have also spoke with the deputy superintendent, who unfortunately, I, I spoke with him yesterday and I don't feel as though we're getting anywhere in terms of assisting our children.
Hey, thank you. We're going to have Dr. Cooper, who is our director of health and wellness. We're going to ask you, we have all your contact information here with your email address and whatnot. So you can be expecting an email from Dr. Cooper to try to set up an appointment to talk with you, talk over your concerns. Okay?
You say you have my information or you need my information?
No, no, we have, we have your email address.
Okay, and then when am I, how long is it going to take for Dr. Cooper to get in touch with me?
It, it should be tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you much. Okay, next one we have is Ms. Pam Lane.
I think it was great that you asked our state senators and our representatives what keeps them up at night. But I also think it's extremely important to hear what keeps the colonial school district parents and teachers up at night. For example, I would like to know what we're doing about the discipline issues we are facing in our schools. Because what keeps me up as a parent in this district is not properly disciplining students who are not following the rules and students who are causing distractions in the classroom and the school. I feel the students who are doing what they're supposed to be doing, following the rules, being attentive, trying to learn, and the teachers who are trying to teach are actually being robbed of education time. As any good parent knows, the more you allow kids to get away with things, the more they will continue that bad behavior. You know, and also, I also think this would help the situation with the losing of teachers and trying to get new teachers to come here. I speak to many teachers throughout the district and not just one school. I also have spoken to many bus drivers that the lack of discipline has been disturbing this year more so than any other year. And I think that it would be really good for the school district, especially the school board, to allow for teachers and parents to come and actually have conversations with you in a, in a large setting without fear of any kind of retaliation, retaliation from their principals and so forth and so on. But I know there are a few teachers that will be willing to speak up. I know there's some that are just counting their days till they can get out of here. But I think we really need the opportunity to hear from us, the parents and the school bus drivers and the teachers and people that use the fact.
Okay, thanks. Couple of good points there. We'll take, we'll have some discussion on that and see if there's some way that we can go and maybe think about doing the same type of thing that we did with legislators and maybe do something with those groups. So thank you for your, your questions and your concerns and we'll see what we can do. Doctor Menzer and I'll have further discussion on that. And then he may reach back out to you. He may have someone reach back out to you about some of the discipline issues that you've heard of.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. President, do we have that on the agenda for next month?
Sure, we're certain. The disposition?
What specifically, Mr. McGee?
I'd like to hear from all board members, how they feel about this.
Okay, so student, school climate, school climate discussion around student behavior discipline?
More information on the, you know, we did receive about the acting elements possible.
Okay. So more of a student discipline report presentation?
Pretty much.
Okay.
All right, no problem. Okay, our last one, not sure if, if she is on the lineup, but Jennifer Lutz? Not on, okay. That's all we have. Thank you very much for your, your questions and comments, everyone. Okay, with that being said, we have nothing else on the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second? Move a second to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed nay?